Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, October 26, 2022. First item on our agenda this evening, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we've got approval of minutes from... Next, we have approval of minutes from October 24th. That was from Monday night's board town meeting. Everybody have a chance to look at these minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 24th.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve minutes from October 24th meeting, the meeting that was prior to the town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? We need two copies, Bill?
Yes.
Yes. Next item on our agenda, A&R plans. We have one for 12 Susan Drive. Okay, can you explain this a little bit, Bill?
Do you want me to do it, or should we have the applicant?
Oh, the applicant, yeah, okay.
I'm here for Ricky. Ricky does not speak English well.
Okay.
My name is Robert Foy. Why land but Ricky's? He had this resuraveled because they had taken 30 inches by 15 feet of my property when they surveyed it. So this is the new survey that was done, that was taken from when he purchased the property off of Angel Leverage. I think it was about nine months ago. I don't know if you can see...
So this parcel A is being returned to your lot?
Back to me again, yeah. There was a mistake, I guess, in the borderline. My property goes from Francis Drive straight back to the existing Angel Leverage's property. And then when they came in and did the GPS surveying, they came 30 inches over onto my property, about 15 feet. In length, 30 inches wide, which has three 60-foot pine trees on it. So Ricky wants nothing to do with it, and he put his fence on the other side of the trees to let me have my... the property back to me.
Okay, so your lot's not a perfect rectangle anymore. It's gonna have that little jog in it?
It'll be... no, it'll be straight back. It had a little jog in it.
Oh, okay, okay.
It had a 30-inch jog halfway down my property line.
Yeah, so you're gonna have a... you're gonna end up with a perfect...
It'll be back straight again, the way it was 65 years ago. Can I come forward and show you?
Yes. Do you live... are you the one that lives... do you live at Lot 11B?
This is my property on Francis Drive.
Yeah.
This is Ricky's lot right here. This is where they put a 30-inch jog over and then down. And then it's been straightened out on the new...
So this is your property here?
Is that 13 Francis Drive?
It doesn't say.
Francis Drive.
Robert Foy.
Here, see it right here?
Yeah.
This is the jog right here. They're giving it back to me again.
So you're getting this... you're getting this parcel A?
Yes, I'm getting it. This is the second set of blueprints. The first ones, they didn't realize that Ricky wanted to give me that back to me.
Okay.
Because these are all straight lots.
Right, but you're gonna have this little jog?
Yes.
Included it with yours.
Yeah, there's...
Okay.
Three awful trees in it.
Okay.
So there's no new lots?
No, yeah.
Just a simple transfer.
Pretty straightforward. Okay, so is there some waivers requested? Topography, wetlands not applicable. Evidence that each building lot to be created as adequate access not applicable. And profile of existing grades not applicable. So we would be looking for a waiver for... Yeah, we'd be looking... I think we should waive them all. So it'd be a waiver of 6E, 6G, 6I, and 6J. Just grant the waiver for that. Would somebody want to make a motion for the waivers?
Mr. Chairman, just one quick question for clarification. I understand that the applicant is not speaking because of a language barrier. Is that correct?
And this is also my property that it affected. So Ricky asked me to come... he's working, but he...
Okay, the only reason I ask is because it's his name on the plan.
But I paid the... paid the dollars for the...
So, Bill, whose name is the application in?
The last question.
Okay, so we have a signed application and everything?
Yes. I guess that's his legal signature.
What the R-A-U?
R-A-V.
R-A-V?
Yeah.
R-A-V.
Okay. Do you want to read those waivers again, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, the waivers would be 6E, 6G, 6I, and 6J.
And what's the property address?
12 Susan Drive.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion at this time that we grant the waivers as read for... What number Susan Drive?
12.
Number 12 Susan Drive, the A&R from 12 Susan Drive.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the waivers. All in favor for the waivers?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the A&R plan for 12 Susan Drive, Dudley Tax Map 115, parcel number 78?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the A&R for number 12 Susan Drive. I know you just said it in irony.
Seventy... seventy-eight.
Dudley Tax Map, number 115, parcel number 78.
Dudley Tax Map, number 115, parcel number 78.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? So we sign two copies and sign the miles.
I'm bringing it in. He has to record this. And Worcester, that's right at the... he's been there before the...
Okay, next A&R for us tonight is Sheldon...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sheldon, Sheldon A&R for West Main Street, Prospect Ave.
Is the applicant here for this plan? Okay. Can you explain it?
Yes. So this property consists of two lots and is own... is with one owner. The intent is to take parcel A, which is 6,858 feet, and take it from the Prospect Avenue lot, map 119, Lot 93, and give it to the corner lot, which is map 11992. On the left-hand margin, you'll see an area calculation which says Lot 2 will... when it's given that additional land, will have 19,214 square feet. And Lot 93, when it loses parcel A, will have 15,060 feet. So both lots will conform to zoning of 15,000 square feet and 100 feet of frontage when this transfer is completed. So it's not creating any new lots. It's just shifting some of the land from one lot to the other lot by the one owner.
And this is in Res 15? Or is it Business 10? Or Business 15?
It's Business 15 and the Aqua for Protection overlay district.
Okay, yeah, I see that. All right, so this is basically very similar to what we just saw, swapping of land between two neighbors. But in this case, it's owned by the same person?
Yes.
Okay, pretty straightforward. So they have... Topography. So they're looking for three waivers. They're looking for waivers... This one is... is this an older form, Bill? Because this starts out at five.
Excuse me?
Is this an older form that they used? Because this starts out at five.
Are you looking at the checklist?
Yeah. I think it's a very old form. It's different.
So I, you know, went through and...
Checklist we just used for the previous one has the first... the first six... There's six items on the first part of the list, and this one only has five.
Oh.
See what I'm talking about?
Excuse me?
See what I'm talking about?
I don't know where they got this form from.
It's the digital submission of the plans. That's missing from this one. It's probably older, like Guy said. Yeah. So it's just an old form, but I think it'll work for what they're trying to do. All right, so we would be looking for... on this form, we'd be looking for a waiver of 5E, 5G, and 5J, which is basically waiver of the topography, waiver of the location of wetland resources and boundaries, and profile of existing grades for the proposed access to the lot. They're not gonna create any new accesses to these lots. They're just swapping land and staying... everything staying the same. So would somebody want to make a... is there any other questions on this? Does somebody want to make a motion for the three waivers for...
The A&R plan on Land for Sheldon on West Main Street and Prospect Ave?
Yeah, make a motion to grant the three waivers, 5E, 5G, and 5J for 107 West Main Street and 3 Prospect Ave. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
So a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Would somebody want to make a motion for the... to accept the A&R plan for... Was it 107 West Main Street and 3 Prospect Ave?
I'll make a motion to accept the A&R plan on 107 West Main Street and 3 Prospect Ave, tax map 119, parcel 92 and 93.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, we need to sign two copies.
I think it was you who wanted a copy of the NRCS preview of the erosion on our farm, where they said that it had been given a... that the parking lot had been giving an... given an agricultural exemption by the conservation team.
Is that in regard to the college plant?
That's the one that continues to erode. No, no, he just wanted to know if I had that at the last meeting and that, so I...
Bill, do you have a copy of the... would you read a copy of the notice?
No, we did that already. This is a continuation of the hearing.
All right, so it's just a... we just reopen it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're a couple minutes late from 7:15, but it's at 7... 7:18. We're gonna reopen the public hearing on the Nichols College Townhomes.
Good evening. I'm Bob Levine, Vice President for Operations at Nichols College. We were here in July to talk about the townhouse project up in the southwest corner of the college. During that hearing, we heard numerous concerns. One probably being the greatest concern was the catch basin that was on that property. We went back, we took a look. The college did a review... did a thorough review before we came, and we did that review again. And from a site perspective, this is the site that the college chooses to develop and put the townhouses on. I know there was lots of discussion that we had that. So I just wanted to let you know that we went back, took a look, and we've made that decision. We additionally looked at what we could do differently up there relative to the catch basin. There's lots of discussion. Could we move it to the west side? Could we split it? Could we do different things? And after careful review of that, and in conjunction with property that we will be closing on in the next 48 hours, we've had a purchase and sales agreement for 99, we'll you'll see, that's what we're proposing, to put the catch basin, moving it away from the neighbors on Center Road, and moving it into that newly acquired property. So I'll let my engineer just review the site plan, the changes in that site plan.
Okay.
So for the record, Pete Parent, Russian Engineer with CHA. So as folks may remember, previously, we had a long longitudinal basin running along the edge of the parking lot here, upgrading of these three parcels on Center Road. We've kept the idea of the parking lot pretty much the same. We did add a little bit of turnaround here to facilitate the dumpster pickup. But essentially, the road still comes down, ties into the existing accessway to Lot N. And then we'd be putting the detention basin below grade of that. And then, you know, the same general idea of, you know, the catch basins up here will collect all the impervious area from the developed area site and the roadway. All that will be discharged through a water quality treatment unit, and then discharged into the basin. The basin will provide peak flow attenuation through detention, and have a low-flow outlet that will discharge into the existing drainage system in the access road, which then discharges into the existing drainage system at Center Road, all designed to meet, you know, mass stormwater requirements. Other than that, the remainder of the site plan has stayed the same. You know, the buildings are still serviced by municipal sewer, underground utilities, and municipal water. We did adjust where the access drive comes in. Previously, the access drive was running along an existing corridor of Lot N. We separated those two out now, and the access drive comes in further to the east on that existing access road up to the parking lot. Happy to answer any questions you folks may have on that, but that's it in a nutshell. Pretty straightforward.
So this detention basin is only to service this new project?
The detention basin is sized to treat the current development, and then it is oversized slightly to provide, if they chose to expand in the future, there is an available volume there.
Sorry, excuse me, can we keep that, that it's oversized to...
It's oversized to handle some additional volume. In theory, if they were to add one or two more buildings, it could handle that volume.
So what's the total volume of the new catch basin design?
This is similar to the last one. It's about 40,000 cubic feet.
Forty thousand gallons, or?
Forty thousand cubic feet.
Cubic feet. So what's that in gallons?
Almost 300,000.
300,000, okay. And approximately how deep we talking? Like, I think the last time you said it was around 9 to 12 feet deep, or?
This basin is about six and a half feet deep from the bottom to the bottom.
Okay. The existing parking lot that's adjacent to this, where does that drain to?
So that is kind of divided. There's somewhat of a drainage divide through the middle here. There's a catch basin at the corner, here, here, and here. Those catch basins get collected and discharged to an existing detention basin, water quality basin here in the corner. And then the remainder of it flows down this access road and just discharges into the street drainage system.
Excuse me, could you stand? We're not...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you explain that drainage?
Sure. So this existing parking lot has three basins that collect the majority of the runoff from it that discharge into this existing water quality basin here that then discharges into that same drainage system that the proposed project will drain to and drains into Center Road. And then a small portion of it does just drain overland through the parking lot and down the road. It gets collected by the drainage structures in that access road.
Isn't it typical that for projects that are private projects such as this, that the drainage, that all the stormwater for any development would be mediated onsite, not discharged into the municipal drainage?
We're matching peak runoff rates from the undeveloped site into the drainage system. That's what mass stormwater requires.
Mr. Chairman, I recall from the last meeting that one of the big issues that came up was an already existing problem with water on the public roadway that's coming off of Nichols College site. So I was hoping that we were gonna see something indicating that the plan would involve some way of helping fix a problem that was already happening up there. I'm assuming. I don't live up there. I'm going on what was said by the residents that were here at the public hearing. I just kind of got the idea that maybe something was gonna be looked at as far as the existing problem with the... There was talk about road, water on the road, standing water that was freezing in the wintertime, problems with drainage. Does any of that ring a bell? Am I dreaming that that happened?
So the drainage within the roadway system is the municipal drainage system. This development will capture runoff from the top of the hill, but, you know, pursuant to the conversations, we felt that the main issue here was to not disturb this slope. And in order to attenuate or capture any flow from that slope, we'd have to disturb it. So the idea here is that, you know, we're capturing all of the water from the development, attenuating it, and discharging it into the existing drainage system. We're not increasing flows to the existing drainage system. We're maintaining or reducing with this detention volume. So it should result in an improvement. I don't know that it will be a marked improvement, given that this sloped area here, pursuant to the discussions we had, is being untouched.
The location of the detention basin was one of the issues that was brought up, but one of the other issues was the problem with mitigating the water that's currently coming off the site prior to the development. And the belief of the people in that area is that if something that was done at the college previously has caused a problem, that this is just going to cause a larger problem, or a current problem to get worse. You're telling me that all of the water from the new development is going to go into this detention basin?
Correct.
But half of the water coming off of that parking lot right now is making it out to the municipal drainage system?
A portion, and it's not making it all the way out to Center Road. It's being... there are drainage structures along this access drive that would capture it before it directly discharged into Center Road.
But those are... those catch basins are tied into the municipal...
This whole system is tied into the municipal drainage system, correct.
Including anything coming out of the... Including anything coming out of the detention basin, correct?
Correct, yeah. It's got to discharge somewhere. So we could not directly connect, but then it would flow overland and end up in Center Road regardless. Center Road is below our site, so there's really...
So this new detention basin that you're going to build is going to be connected to the municipal?
It's going to be connected to the drainage system within this access road, and that drainage system, the access road, is connected to the municipal drainage system in Center Road.
Have you ever heard of this, Bill?
Excuse me, if it can't handle it now, how's it going to handle this additional?
That's what we're getting at right now. I can't ever remember a plan brought before us where somebody was tying their drainage system into a municipality's drainage system. You're supposed to mediate your own storm water on your own property.
We are mediating the storm water from peak flow and water quality volume standpoint, but water from this parcel discharges into Center Road now, regardless of whether it was completely undeveloped or whether it was that the whole thing was a parking lot.
No, if it was completely undeveloped, you wouldn't have the catch basins on there.
But they're, just based on topography, water that falls here is going to drain into Center Road, regardless of what this property looked like. So from a mass stormwater perspective, we are entitled to discharge the same rate of water from our property into Center Road as existing conditions. So that's what we've done here with the detention basin. We've taken this area that currently drains to Center Road regardless of the development. We've taken, and into account all the developed area, and we've designed a stored volume that dissipates that peak flow, because obviously we get more runoff off of pavement than we do off of grass and woods. So that's why we need this stored volume. And then we have a metering structure here, which slowly releases that volume into the system at a rate, at or below what the water from this undeveloped area would make to Center Road.
This is, to me, this is no different than a small subdivision. Would you agree or disagree?
It's a site development, yeah, it's very similar.
Right. And I mean, when we approve subdivisions, regardless of the size, they're not tied into the municipality's storm drains, they're managing their...
Own water.
They're managing their own water.
Where is their outlet though?
To the detention basin, and if you have to have an overflow, you have another detention basin to catch the overflow.
Well, at some point, that overflow has to discharge somewhere, into a stream, into a disquater.
Yeah, or wetland or something.
Right. So eventually, all that water ends up into a municipally-owned system.
I've just never, I've just never remembered any plans coming before us, and they said, well, we're going to tie it into the municipal storm water.
We could have an overflow that discharged onto this property, and it would flow overland and end up in Center Road. And we wouldn't be directly connected, but we would still be discharging water that would end up in Center Road.
Sheet flow, basically.
Well, you know, this is the existing system that's in place today, and the Highway Superintendent didn't indicate that there were any serious drainage problems from that current system on Center Road.
Can I also just point out that in 2016, Center Road was completely rebuilt, and all the storm water within Center Road was completely upgraded. And just, and that all of the storm water from Center Road discharges across the street into a permanent easement that the college gave as another detention basin. So all of Center Road was completely upgraded to current stormwater standards, so...
The lower, excuse me, the lower part of the direction does Center Road flow?
Excuse me, if you want to speak, you need to come up to the front table.
Can I?
Sure.
The, right, one there?
Yes, please.
It was only the northern part of Center Road that was redone. The southern part of Center Road is still pretty much like a stagecoach road. It's very narrow, very poorly paved, and it's...
Are we going to have people?
Treacherous, it would be treacherous with ice on it.
For the record, could you state for the record who you are and?
I'm sorry, Jean Davis.
And your address?
Seventy-nine Healy Road.
Okay, thank you.
We have exactly the same thing going on on Healy Road from all of their parking lots, discharging down Healy Road. Today, it was like the Mississippi River down Healy Road.
Just for clarity, mind if I step up? When Center Road was rebuilt, she's corrected, was rebuilt down to about this portion, all of the storm water from Center Road coming down that hill, that this site will tie into, discharges into a catch basin, not a catch basin, a detention pond right here, just south of the entrance into our athletic field. It doesn't sheet flow down Center Road. If you take a ride down there, you'll see that detention pond.
May I speak?
Sure.
Jim Durkey, 95 Center Road. Bill, is it Bill? This gentleman just spoke.
Bob.
Bob. You're incorrect, when we get a lot of rain, heavy rain, that the storm drains, the culverts in the road, they overflow, they bypass, and they go right down, past my house, 95, right down to 93 Center Road, Stefanik's, my neighbor Markin and Stefanik. So there is a problem when we have heavy rains there. And in the winter, it's very icy there. So it's a big concern with this runoff. Thank you. I live there, I see it.
By design, that's the way it was designed, through mass, by what?
On paper, what's reality, it's going to be two different things.
That's fair, yeah.
All right, so just so everybody knows, we did not receive our feedback from the town engineer yet.
Correct.
So we were awaiting what his comments are going to be on that, so... Yeah, anybody else like to speak? Go ahead.
My name's Mark Stefanik, I live at 93 Center Road. When I came here this evening, I was really hoping that Nichols would think outside the box and not build on that location, but it looks like they've got their minds made up that that's what they want to do. I don't quite understand your comments about the basin and the need for an overflow. My understanding would, the basin is supposed to be, the water's supposed to leach back into the ground and not overflow. I thought that's what basins were designed to do.
So, there's a difference between an infiltration basin, which we're talking about, and a detention basin, which this is. We need suitable soils to design an infiltration basin. There's requirements about how fast the water has to leach into the soil in order for us to be able to account for infiltration. The soils on this site are not very favorable for infiltration. We will get some infiltration out of this basin, but we can't infiltrate the full volume of the storms that are going to be required here, even if, you know, we built a basin that was half the size of this site, just based on the infiltration rates that we're getting out there. So this is purely a detention basin, where we have, because we have a backup, we still have a big volume, and then we've got a small hole that we slowly let the water drain out of.
So the other comment I wanted to make is, the parking lot now is between the new construction and the back of the residence lot. I really feel that parking lot should be on the opposite side of the buildings. That way, all the lighting, the noise associated with moving vehicles, the opening and closing of doors, students coming and going from the buildings, is all on the opposite side and not right in the residence's backyard. Thank you.
So this...
Wait one moment, Mr. Chairman, I actually had a question through the chair for Mr. Stefanik.
Yep.
I was wondering if you could tell us, because you're also right there where the water runs down the street if the catch basins overflow. I'm curious, is that, I mean, what's like a typical rainstorm? Is it, like, we just had quite a bit of rain in the past 24 hours?
If we get a substantial rain, those catch basins, there's one right on the lot line between the Durkeys and the Stefaniks. That catch basin gets overwhelmed, and the water just sheets right by our place, and eventually crosses Center Road and dumps into the woods. And that happens maybe 100 feet after our property.
Would you say that happened today? I mean, we had a heck of a downpour today, off and on.
I didn't witness it today, but I would guess that it did, because it's the type of rain that that happens, you know.
I'm just trying to determine whether or not we're talking, like, does it have to be a tropical storm or hurricane type of situation?
No, if we get a good gully washer, it's going to bypass that catch basin.
Okay.
For the record, it did today. Bill Sabine, a tenant of the Stefaniks at 93 Center Road, and today, there was significant runoff that goes past our property and, like you said, crosses over about 100 feet past ours to the south.
To the engineer, your, what was your calculations on that detention basin? Was that for 100-year storm or a 500-year storm? What was your basing in on?
We designed to 100-year storm per mass stormwater.
Okay.
And it sounds like what the neighbors are describing here is a gutter flow condition in Center Road. So what we're doing here by tying into the municipal drainage system would be eliminating this flow area from that gutter and tying it directly into the pipe system.
With the new design, is there any more retaining walls along the edge of the parking lot?
There's not a retaining wall on this side, there is a small retaining wall on the high side to hold up the area where the dumpster will be placed.
And are you showing any guardrails between the parking lot and the slope?
There is a guardrail here where we have this steep slope, so from this point along the edge to the roadway, there's a guardrail, and then there'll obviously be a guardrail on top of the retaining wall as well.
But not on those parking spots?
Here, no.
Can you tell from your drawing what's the elevation from the parking lot down to, like, where the Stefaniks would live?
So we're at 654 at the parking lot, and the property line is at 635, so about 20 feet of difference.
Plus five to the buildings, which is 135.
Buildings are currently proposed to be just under 30 to the opposite.
Is there a lighting plan in this package?
Yes. You see that we've positioned the site lights for the parking lot on the further side from the property lines, and by the time we get, you know, 50 feet away from the parking area, we're down to zero foot cairns. It's over 100 feet from the property line to the parking area.
Yeah, I just think that with the elevation difference, regardless if the light is leaving your property, it's still going to be a big, bright beacon above the other properties because of the elevation difference.
So just to follow up on my earlier question, is there a reason why the parking cannot be moved to the other side of the structures?
We did look at it, it's just access through the property, additional expense and tearing more of that parking lot up to get there. It's just, from a practicality standpoint, it's not that easy to get all the way across, cost-wise, parking lot.
Even if the buildings were slid down? If the buildings were moved down, and then you had additional 20 feet, you couldn't get that driveway past those buildings and set that parking up on the opposite side?
I think I was pretty candid that our goal is to add a couple more buildings, and they would probably be on that west side, which then would push that parking lot even further, you can see the slope coming across the parking lot.
So the next two buildings will even, will have more parking on that side, which will impact the residents even more?
Not necessarily.
Where's that parking, where's that parking going to go? For the next two buildings?
Down below the lot, down below Lot N. We're not increasing beds.
And why can't those parking spaces go in Lot N now?
We need to have some parking here at the same level of the building for access from an ADA requirement.
Move in, move out, fire safety, those types of things. That's why they're very limited.
How many spots are in that lot right now, 15?
Pete, do you remember how many?
Yes, I believe it's 15.
So it's already a pretty small lot.
Yeah.
Yes, there are four handicapped, and I believe 11 standard spaces.
Oh, okay.
You go up, man.
Hello, my name is Sandra Smith, I live at 84 Healy Road, and we also own the four acres that are on the west side of this plot. My question is, how many parking spots are available to the 52 beds that are going to be at the two now, new townhouses?
So the campus has done a study, they have sufficient parking throughout the campus for the number of beds that they have, and as Bob has stated, where they're not intending to increase the number of beds on the campus, they're just transitioning away from older dorms to these newer ones. But we do need to provide some additional parking, as we stated, for, you know, move in, move out, ADA requirements, fire safety, those sort of things.
So is there any parking available in the park, existing parking lot that is there?
Absolutely.
That will be used?
Absolutely. The way it works on the college campuses are, parking lots are designated either faculty and staff and commuters, or residential students. So residential students don't have a particular parking lot to parking, they, obviously, they want to be close to their building, and if there's nothing available, they go to the next one. So it's not like they get a space or they get a lot. So anybody who lives here, quite honestly, if those lots are full, they'll have to go to one other lot. That's how it works.
Okay, so...
We have sufficient parking for all of our residential students, that's why we're not proposing to add 50, say 50 spots up here just for these kids, that is.
Okay. I'm fairly familiar with the campus, and I don't, I'm not aware of any big parking lots that are very close to that.
No, they're not. Trust me, the students will remind me of that regularly.
Okay.
It's, yeah, they either have to go down to M, there's a small lot, there's a small lot here, right here, between these two buildings, there's N, there's M down across the street, there's G, F.
I also wanted to know, before you add more additional townhouses, do you have to go through this procedure again, or do you have to go before the Conservation Commission?
Site plan?
Site plan, I would...
Yes, any new development would require a site plan approval. And if there's wetland jurisdiction, they'd have to file with the Conservation Commission.
Okay. So normally, when there's going to be new development near your property, you're notified ahead of time so that you can go to the meeting and discuss what the plans are and what options there might be. But this was already approved before it came, before the planning board, by the Conservation Commission?
This wasn't approved by the Conservation Commission, because there's no wetlands involved with this.
Okay. So my understanding is, from the last meeting, that this board could not refuse this, they could only advise changes?
This is a site plan review, we're reviewing the site plan. They can build their project where they want to, but we just want to make sure that it's safe and effective for the rest of the residents.
Okay, so you can say, if you found something that wasn't right, you can say, no, you can't build there.
Well, we were not happy with the way the previous plan was laid out with the 45,000-gallon detention basin up on the hill higher, where it was right behind two of the residence houses.
Right, okay, I must have misunderstood.
Now it's not going to be behind any residence houses, it's from what it's looking like.
I must have misunderstood. I thought that someone said that they couldn't say no, they could only make changes, but I must have misunderstood.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Well, Mr. Chairman, at this point, lacking our own peer review of the storm water calculations and, you know, the new detention basin location... of the stormwater calculations and, you know, the new detention basin location and size and everything else, there's not much we can do.
Just wait for Graves.
Yeah. I mean, the only thing I can say that, that I would really like to see is like, I, I, I can't imagine why you wouldn't wanna put a guardrail all the way in front of those parking places. Regardless, I mean, it's quite, quite a different elevation. Something happens with a car malfunction or a truck, a delivery truck or something, it's coming down the hill and it's going into somebody's backyard. So, I, I think that would be the least you'd wanna do there is put, at least put a guardrail all the way along that parking lot. My opinion. And you said the dump, the dumpster was gonna be on the opposite side. Can you show that again?
The dumpster will be located here.
Okay. And there's a roadway or a driveway to get to that dumpster, obviously?
Yes, that's, you know, part of the reason why we provided this, this turnaround was to provide access to that dumpster without the, the garbage truck having to make a back and maneuver.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I was just thinking maybe we could just make sure that when Jeff reviews this, when the town engineer reviews this plan, does the peer review, that we make sure we have special emphasis on the concern of the effect on the existing municipal stormwater system on Center Road from this project. That's, in a nutshell, that's what we're talking about. We, we've gotta have a clear indication from him that this is not going to exasperate any potential current issues that are on that road now.
And given the fact that Jeff is, Jeff Graves has been our, or Jeff in Graves Engineering has been our consulting town engineer for some number of years, I would like you to ask him the question if he can, if he can point out to us another project in town that was done similar to how this one's being proposed where they're tying in the overflow to the municipal drains because I can't, I can't remember any that are like this.
Okay.
And so, I just asked him if he, if he can, you know, if he knows of one off the top of his head or if he can point us in the right direction. Because that's why I'm, I'm just thinking that this is not, this is atypical, but I may be wrong. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Bill Sabine, ninety-three Center Road. I have two questions. They're both pertaining to the drainage. You said you're gathering everything from that site and sending it through the, the catch basin and overflow eventually to the proper channels. Currently, that's just kind of a plateau up there. So, any water that falls goes off in all directions, including down to lot N, but also into the residence backyard, into the Healy Road residence property. Is, I, I, I see an issue with that, collecting everything from the top of that hill and sending it all into one direction, namely Center Road. And I understand the, you know, the limiting of how much water goes into there at a time, but it seems like you're gonna, you're diverting it from the west and the south sides and sending it all directly to the east side. It seems like there's gonna be more than what is flowing there now. And then additionally, in terms of runoff, winter snow removal. Generally, that just gets piled up as, on the campus, I've seen as I've been driving around. What is the plan for that and how does that affect the, the runoff and the effectiveness of it?
So, I'll address your, your question on the area that we're collecting and the volume and rate first. So, we are regrading that, that plateau area kind of into a little bit of a bathtub to direct all the flow from that developed area into our drainage system. And as you stated, obviously, we're, we're collecting some area that currently drains west and south and north. And that's, you know, part of the reason why we have the detention basin here is that we're providing enough volume in that detention basin so that the rate of runoff from this site towards Center Road remains the same under existing and proposed conditions. The volume of runoff will increase, but the rate at which it discharges stays the same. And that's what's regulated by mass stormwater is the rate at which it discharges. And I'll, I'll let Bob speak to snow removal, but, you know, they, they'll plow this parking lot as, you know, you plow any parking lot. And then I think, you know, when they get too much snow, they, they do remove it to other places.
That's exactly it. We'll, more than likely, in a, in a pocket like this, we'll put a plant in, but we'll probably pile up the snow in the parking lot. So, if it does melt, and it will, it'll melt in the parking lot and stay in the pond and continue on.
Okay.
And if it gets large enough, we'll remove it.
Annalee Stefanic, ninety-three Center Road. This is another issue. I'd like to, I, I'm concerned about light pollution. We've been at our place for over forty years. We live in a small town and there is a lot of light coming from Nichols College right now and there's gonna be even more in our backyard and it is very upsetting to me.
Jean Davis, seventy-nine Healy Road. You wanted to know if there was another project, which apparently was the first site plan ever approved. The addition to a parking lot on Healy Road, the majority of the water from those parking lots comes out onto Healy Road. Today, it was absolutely remarkable. There was water six inches deep on much of Healy Road that couldn't be contained in the catch basins. Now, as I understand these plans, when you say you control the rate of flow, you're still, you're increasing the volume and you're increasing the length of time that that flow is going to happen. Now, that's the perfect picture for erosion. You know, where you say it zigs off down onto somebody's property, that's gonna be another erosion gully, just like we are dealing with on our side of Healy Road. And that's something that nobody ever pays any attention to. Oh, well, it's, it's, you know, according to state regulations. Well, the state regulations mean more water over a longer time, meaning more erosion. But I suppose it's only the environment, so why worry about it?
What number did you say you were at?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
If you wanna see some erosion, come and visit us.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
John Cunningham, sixty-two West Main. I'm really concerned about the water in sewer. I don't know if Nichols realizes, but sewage goes to Webster. We get charged for that. And I didn't realize that there'd be that much runoff into the sewers. And I know you'll be paying for the water, but that's the meter going in, not, not coming.
The municipal storm drains do not go into the sewage system.
Okay.
So, it's, it's totally separate.
All right.
Yep. Anybody else?
Mark Stefanic, ninety-three Center Road. Looking at that existing parking lot on this plan that's above the proposed project, the, the bottom left corner of that existing parking lot, there's an, there's an access driveway to get from the parking lot onto the athletic field that is currently there. To me, that seems like a natural driveway for vehicles coming to this proposed project to get onto the west side of this property, which would allow you to move that parking lot to the opposite side of those two new buildings. I understand you need a utility corridor, but that can all be under a lawn area. It doesn't have to be under a paved area. And the only downside I would see is that cars would now have to come up the driveway and drive through the parking lot to get onto that west side of the property. But by surrendering a few parking spaces, you could create a travel lane for those cars to get up into that area and then have that parking relocated to the other side. That would take the lights to the other side, would take the vehicles, the noise, any runaway vehicles wouldn't be running down the hill into the residences' lots. It would all be on the opposite side of the project, away from the local residences.
Did you, when you looked at this, did you look at putting, if you wanted to put four units up there with having a common parking lot in the center?
No. It's, it's, we're looking for green space in, in between those buildings. It's a traditional residential quadrangle.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. Jim Durkey, ninety-five Center Road. Mr. Levine, you mentioned, did I get your name right?
Yes, you did.
You mentioned earlier the purchase of ninety-nine Center Road. And I'd like to approach and look at the property line because in that deal, ninety-nine Center Road belongs to my father and stepmother, the college is buying that. And part of that deal was, my property line was to be moved over.
Right, it was, yep. You can take a look at the...
Does it reflect that?
Yes, it does. Absolutely does. Yep.
Sure.
By all means, come on up. You almost states it went out, this was your original?
Yep.
This and then that wider piece that goes down there.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Can you tell me if, like, stay and a go?
Stay. The white, the, the stay. That's the plan. I've completely reviewed all of it.
So, I live here. I already have a runoff problem from ninety-nine Center Road. But this is a toxic apple garden.
Mm-hmm.
This, the, here.
It's all drains.
Yeah, this is, like I said, I already have runoff issues.
The hot zone.
It's coming up here. Looks like we're taking the barn out?
Yes.
Yep. So, there's a drain underneath that barn.
Okay. Good chat.
So, that, that's a problem.
This is Durkey. You're all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else has any other questions? We can, we can take them. Or, like we said earlier, we don't have the review back from our town engineer. Once we get that review, we'll have it at the next, available at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes, we should have it certainly by beginning of next week.
Okay. So, that's, if that's all right with you, Mr. Levine, we'll put you on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes, that's fine.
We'll get the feedback from Graves. We'll see where it is.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask, I, because I don't recall, because I know this started a while ago, do we have a light study for this project?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we do? Okay.
Yes.
Is that in the packet that I...
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you.
I mean, on, on the light study, I'm guessing you're doing everything with downward lighting?
Correct.
Would it, would it be possible in some cases to do upward lighting to try to alleviate some of the, you know, like, well, I should say, I shouldn't say upward lighting, low level down lighting? So, it's more like on a walk, like bollards or walkway path lights versus having them at the top of a building shining down the side?
We'd have to have the, the lighting engineers look at it. It's, it's difficult to get sufficient lighting into a parking lot with bollard lighting on the edge. They just don't have the, the cast that a pole-mounted light does. I mean, it's something you can ask them to look at, but this, we're, we're down to zero twenty feet away from the edge of the parking lot.
Right, I, I, I understand that, but you, you, you've, you've obviously been there to see the situation with the, where the neighbors live versus the top of the property. So, I mean, it's gonna be a big, bright spot above them regardless, even if it is, is not casting out past your property line. It's still gonna be a big, bright area above their property that, I mean, you can't hide that. There's, you can't put a fence or do anything to hide that. So, it's, that's the issue. I mean, it was like, you know, I think we, we got, we, we all know the situation with the solar field in front of Shepherd Hill High School. Those trees were supposed to be, be the barrier to, you know, to shield the solar panels. But because the solar panels are up on a hill, the trees are not gonna grow big enough that you can't, you're gonna shield those solar panels. So, there's a cer, similar situation. Okay. Anybody else wanna speak?
So, where are the, where, where are the light posts on that parking lot?
So, there, so this, this is the edge of parking here.
Yep.
The light posts are on the opposite side along the back of sidewalk. There's one pole here to light up the circle and then the remainder of the poles are along the drive on the far side, closer to lot N.
It's not on...
I gotta go up there and look.
It's not on that plan. You, you gotta look at his plan.
Show me that again. Okay, so, this is the parking area.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, just as Laven explained to me, how this, having these lights here is better for these people here than having these lights here?
It, it's similar, but the feet off the back, you can see how they have this little long... It's just a very minimal difference, but it is better to have it on this side versus on the other side.
Okay. Because I'm just, I'm thinking about the topography here, right? Their, their, their houses here.
Mm-hmm.
They're looking up this way, correct?
Correct.
So, if they're looking up this way, are, are you saying that this hill is enough that it's gonna obstruct the view of these lights?
No, no.
Then how are they not looking at the underside of these lights? These are downward.
They're, they're gonna, they would have a clear view of the underside of the lights regardless of where they are. But by having them further away, it reduces the impact. There is a stand of trees also along their property line.
Okay. All right. And there's, there's no kind of lighting that could be directed facing this way and where the backs of the lights don't show any impact?
Well, I mean, these, these are full cutoff fixtures. I mean, it's just that, that square box. So, regardless of where this box is, it's at the same elevation, right? You're not at a different elevation here than we are here. So, the only...
In other words, even if we moved up here, you're still gonna have the same issue when you move?
Right. The, the, the view of those lights is the same, it's just further away here. You've just got a downward box of light that comes out. That's the little cutoff fixtures that they talk about.
Okay.
So, regardless of where a pole is positioned, it's the same box of light coming out of it. You put different heads in them, but, you know, this is a, a long head versus a, you know, a square head or whatever. But regardless of wherever that was, here or here, that, that view we were standing under, it's the same. By moving them further away, we're reducing the impact as much as we can.
And in the early stages when you were doing this, why, why didn't, what was the reason behind not having this whole thing turned that increase here with parking lot actually just added on to this existing parking lot? This parking lot was more like here and these two buildings are like this, so that they're looking at just the back of this building.
There's a fairly significant slope there. So, we're talking thirty feet of grade difference.
Oh, yeah, I see. Okay. I would, I, so it was...
I realized it's a...
This thing's on the mountain.
What's over here?
So, that, that's the extension of that, that plateau.
Of that?
So, that it's relatively flat to about here and then it drops off steeply to the south.
So, turning it this way, looking back here is not an option?
Well, I mean, there are lots of different options, but at some point, we have to have access, and we have to have parking lot, and it's going to have lights in it, and it's going to be thirty feet taller than one of the neighbors. And the further we move away from these neighbors, the closer we move to these neighbors.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting moving it closer to these neighbors. I'm suggesting moving it.
That's what I said last one, just turn it.
But moving this parking lot out of the backyards of these, sticking it over here where we're already in existing, closer to the existing lot.
What I'm saying is the impact are, but in reality, that's a hundred and fifty feet from the property line and, you know, two hundred and two feet from this house.
Two hundred and two?
This dot is maybe by one twenty, so, dot right here.
Peter, could you summarize that discussion we weren't able to?
Oh, sure. So, yeah, we were kind of discussing the thought process behind the layout. And, you know, we were, you know, sorry, Commissioner...
Mr. Whatrow.
Was talking about, you know, rotating this ninety degrees, and we were discussing that, you know, putting a parking lot in between this building and that existing parking lot, there's a fairly steep slope there. It would require a pretty massive retaining wall in order to construct that. And then, we were also discussing, you know, we're, we're talking a lot about how this parking lot is right in these neighbors' backyards, but, you know, it's, it's a hundred and fifty feet to the property line, and then, you know, another forty to fifty feet from the property line to the houses. So we're talking, you know, two hundred feet plus from the house to the parking lot, and then, you know, from the house to the building, you're talking over three hundred feet. So it's a pretty good area there that, you know, of open space.
And we started by talking about this location of the street, the lights there for the parking. I thought maybe if they were on the other side of the parking lot, facing back towards the new buildings, that it would be better. But I now understand that because of the elevation, it's actually better for it to, it's better for, where it is now is better because it's further away from the lot lines of the houses there.
Mark Stefanic, ninety-three Center Road. I agree with you that it's better, but would be a lot better if it was on the other side of the buildings. But that's not why I stood up here. My, my question is for the planning board. Has, has the planning board walked this property?
Yeah.
As a group, you've all walked the property, you understand the lay of the land, and the residents that are involved and are impacted by this?
Yeah.
Yeah, it took a ride up there.
Okay. Thank you.
How tall are these light posts?
No, I don't... Twenty feet.
No plans to put, like, Green Giant on the other side of that parking lot? Like, on their side, Stefanic's side, east side? You know, like, put the Green Giant Alvarades?
Oh.
To block a little bit of the light anyway?
I don't think there's any plans for any kind of screening structure now.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, that's a really good point. If, given the elevation, if they're looking up, right, wouldn't that actually help to have a row of plants?
Well, there's an existing row of trees. I mean, this is a wooded area in between the two properties.
Yeah, it's all the way at the bottom of the hill, though. Like, a hundred and fifty feet down.
So you're suggesting planting trees along the top of the...
Yeah, well, you should put the crossw, uh, the, uh...
Gardrail?
Gardrail, yeah. That's an idea. Hope for light pollution anyway.
I have a question for Bob, too. Do you know how many, percentage-wise, how many students that live on campus actually park or actually have cars? It's got to be pretty high. I know you have all freshmen over there.
I, I do have, I just don't have that with me.
For next meeting, maybe?
Sure, absolutely.
This is not going to be freshman housing, though, correct?
Correct, it's not.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, like, freshmen have cars, too, like, all freshmen, or a lot of freshmen, anyway. I know the biggest complaint that I heard from students is, is the parking, finding parking.
Yeah, they, they want convenient parking.
Yeah, of course, everyone does.
Yeah. It's the moral mentality, just drive around until they find the closest one. But from a permitting standpoint, just so you know, when residents move in, they have to apply for a parking permit. And those parking permits, we know the exact amount, and we know exactly how many parking spaces we have, and that's not an issue.
So you have enough parking, it's just, it's just that everybody wants the best parking?
Correct. Absolutely. No doubt, the seniors here will want preferred parking up there.
How many parking tickets you give out a year?
Oh, that's interesting. I just got that report just the other day from Public Safety. I forget how many. I'd rather not say on record. I'm not sure exactly, but it's, it's hundreds. And especially the first few weeks of educating where they can park.
Yeah.
You know? So, percentage.
Okay. So then we'll, we'll continue this public hearing at our next regularly scheduled...
November ninth.
November ninth, that's the meeting?
At seven fifteen?
Seven fifteen, same time. And by then, we'll have the report back from Graves.
Bill, you'll shoot that over to us once you get it from Graves, in case there's any... Sure. Issues that we have to take care of. Appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to go back on our agenda. We accidentally, actually missed one of the items that was for this public hearing because we were running a little late with the eight-hour plans. So we've got appointment of Daniel Edmiston to be the associate member for the planning board?
Yes, he's expressed an interest in doing that...
Being the associate member, okay.
With the planning board, and, as you know, he's former member chairman.
Yep.
Had a lot of experience.
Is it a joint appointment between us and the board of select?
No, just the planning board.
Just the planning board, okay. So, somebody like to make a motion that we appoint Daniel Edmiston as the associate member for the planning board?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to also comment that I think he would be a very valuable asset. He's got more experience than myself. I believe you and Dan are, were on the board for quite a few years. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Daniel Edmiston as an associate member to the Dudley Planning Board.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Okay. Just so, we'll explain for the, the people who are wondering, what does an associate member do? They basically, they take up a spot for a member that may have to excuse themselves because of a conflict, and we have to vote on, is it special permits?
Yes, they can vote on special permits, but not site plans.
Okay.
Or subdivisions.
Yeah, okay. All right. And that'll move us up to the standard business. Our standard business, discussion status reports on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted and unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpon Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive, Tobin Farm Estates, Flyin Estates. So I think most, anybody who was at the town meeting on Monday night will know that Tobin Farms did pass for the bediment. So I think we can pretty much take that one off the list.
Okay.
Don't jump the gun yet. Well, I mean, yeah, it's not...
Get that work done first.
Right, but I mean, I don't, I don't think we're going to have to go back and...
You never know, this one's been on, on there for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, barely passed.
One percent.
One percent.
So, um, so what's the option, Bill, for Misty Meadows? They could, they could probably bring that back up in the spring if they want to.
They could, right. There's nothing to prohibit them from coming back.
And I mean, I think the quotes would still be pretty, pretty reasonable from, from fall to spring, but I mean, I can't, I can't imagine we could go to next fall without having new quotes, right?
Right. Yeah, I just want to say that I, I inadvertently got some bad information that, that once the article was defeated, it couldn't be brought back for two years. And then I read the statute today, and it said the article can be brought back at the next, the next meeting. So...
That applies to zoning amendments.
Oh.
Two-year prohibition.
Okay, so it was, that's why...
Right.
Unless it's, unless it's brought up by us, right? Like, if the planning board endorses it, then you can bring it up if it gets defeated?
Then it can be, within two years. Right. Okay, so, yeah, definitely, I think we should, we don't have to talk about it now, but definitely want, we want to bring that one back in the spring and with a properly operating, no malfunction vote system.
Clickers.
I think we got a good chance. I mean, it was sixty-six to forty-four percent, for crying out loud. We had fifty-four, at six fifty-five PM, the moderator announced that we had fifty-four registered voters. He did say the number was going up as more people were walking in. But the point being, you do the math, one, one person not, not getting their vote registered would be like two and a half percent of the vote. So, you can imagine, you got four or five clickers that malfunctioned. Of course, somebody could say, well, the four or five clickers that malfunctioned might have been no votes. But let's face it, how many people are in Misty Meadow? There's just not that many people on the street.
Ten.
Ten? So...
I don't know what he talked about, are from Misty Meadows, too.
Yeah, so I mean, they have the option to bring it back in the spring if they want to, so, if somebody wants to. So, how would they approach it? Just somebody reach out to us, to the planning board, or to you, or...
Yeah, there, there's no set process for it.
Okay.
As long as they make it known that they'd like to bring it back. Maybe we could just, would it be appropriate for us to just drop a note to, we have that one individual that, I forgot his name, the gentleman who came last night to the meeting? Mr. Downhill? Yes, maybe just let him know.
Yeah.
Okay. That he gets another bite at the apple in the spring.
Yeah, because it's not like they would have been doing the work over the winter anyways, so...
Speaking of which, what about our other defeated articles?
So I'm trying to remember, what was it? Was the...
Was it the driveway one?
Was it driveway?
Carrom driveway.
And the electric vehicles?
So they both, they both failed?
Yes. Electric vehicle failed?
Yes. We could bring that back in the spring if we wanted to.
You could.
Everyone malfunctioned? I thought that was the one.
Keep your notes, Bill.
Yeah, we did it, and we voted.
Yeah.
So we should probably come up with a definition for reconstruction was the question. Yeah, because I think people...
I thought you gave a good answer, but it didn't, they wanted it in writing in the article, and it just didn't, wasn't there.
Right, so we can, we can put that into our, we can probably put that into the site, site plan bylaw, too. Because I do think we want to take out that one word where it says additional, ten spots in there, so we might want to do a little bit of text editing on that one bylaw.
I just don't understand the opposition to the, to wanting to beef up the regulations regarding common driveways. I mean, I understand, I, I know Tom's position is he's against common driveways, but I'll reiterate it again, there's already a bylaw that allows common driveways. We want to actually make it more strict. Right? So...
That, that was brought up because Mason Road had that common driveway with those three houses. Road, ZVA.
I understand, but when you, when you, when you don't support the article that actually beefs up the regulations for common driveways, you're leaving the old article the way it is, which actually makes it easier to get the common driveway that you're against. That's my point.
All right.
All right.
I've got a question on the EV parking one. How about that nonprofit organizations? Are they exempt from zoning from that, or, like that lady was asking?
No, you can require them to conform to parking regulations.
Okay. That was my question, I was going to ask about soccer.
You could make the call to not require them to do the EV stations if that was your preference.
I, I mean, I, I think once, once Metin, the state of Massachusetts decides that they're not going to allow gas-powered vehicles in the state anymore, like California already has, there's going to be all kinds of people coming in wanting to put these in for free because they're going to, they're going to see a way to make a profit with them. And if you...
Yeah, but what's your profit margin on that? Did you look at that?
But it, it doesn't matter if it's...
Three dollars an hour.
If you're a business...
Or the money spent on it.
If you're a business and somebody comes to you and says, oh, I want to put a charging station in your parking lot, and it doesn't affect you, and it may, it's going to benefit your business if you have customers that come in that have electric cars, they have a place to recharge.
Yeah, but most of those businesses on phase three power, this is quick charging station, that's only thirty minutes. You go to single phase, it takes, what?
Single phase is residential. It's funny you mention exemptions. Is, is Nichols College exempt from, would Nichols College be exempt from this article? No.
No.
Right, so, of course, this lot's only fifteen spaces, so it falls under the twenty. So we couldn't make them put one on that one, but if they ended up resurfacing the other parking lots, large ones...
I'm sure they're going to have some. If they don't already have some now, I'd be surprised.
Well...
They're going to have some.
I said, I was talking to one of the owners, you know, of one of the businesses in town that has a charging station, and they said that one of the people that's coming down there and plugging in and leaving his car there is a, is a Nichols student. That's the...
Leave his car, is that the Marty's one?
Yeah. Imagine that, to get a, nobody else in town to get your car charged.
Now, how fast is this charging down there?
I think his is a level two, I don't remember. I did the research, I figured out what level one, level two, level three is, how much the cost is for each one, the rebates, yada, 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 all that. It's like, you know, so it all, it all differs. It really depends on the type of, you know, for instance, if you're talking about a business like, well, where Guy works, for instance, you know, a lot of those spaces, those are employees. So the car is there all day long. So you don't need a level three charging station because you're not, you're not looking to charge it in twenty or thirty minutes.
Right, but the, the people that work there that I talk to that have electric cars say they, they go out, if they park in the morning and they, and they, they come in, whatever, seven, eight o'clock, and they plug their car in, by noon time, it's fully charged. So they go out and move it so that somebody else with an electric car can park it there. Because right now, we have ten spots, we're going to have twenty in the very near future. And the company bought three or four Teslas, so they, they've got to charge them, you know, because they use them for company business every day.
Yeah, so like a convenience store, for instance, or a fast food restaurant, you need a much faster charging station to make it profitable. But then, you think about, wait a minute, if you're talking about a convenience store, how many convenience stores have over twenty, twenty parking spaces?
Right, and people aren't going to go in a convenience store for twenty minutes or thirty minutes, they're going to go in for five minutes.
Exactly.
It's got to be at a restaurant or a place where it's...
I can see going to work and plugging it in all day, and like you said, well...
Yeah, but I mean...
You're walking in and out of a place.
Gentex or something.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're saying that there's only, you know, like, one of the guys I talked to, he's got, well, one guy has the new Mustang, one guy I talked to had a Prius plugin, and another guy had a RAV4 plugin, and they all said the same thing, you know, if it's charging for three, four hours, it's, the car's fully charged, so...
So those are hybrids?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're not all electric, so it's smaller, better?
No, they're, they're, they're all electric hybrids.
Oh, they're all electric?
All electric, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're plug-in hybrids, so...
Plug-in electric, right.
Yeah.
And let's not forget, it's going to be site plan review, so...
Yeah.
If they've got a business where, like you said, it's something where the people are coming in and out, coming in, in and out really quickly, and they happen to somehow have twenty...
Coffee shop or donut shop.
Twenty, twenty parking spaces, they could come for site plan review and ask us to waive that requirement, correct?
Yeah.
Right. So, just case by case, common sense?
All right. Let's move on to the inspections and actions associated with site plans. We just had a site plan review tonight, but the ones that we have pending right now is We just had a site plan review tonight, but the ones that we have pending right now is Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres. The condominium documents, I see we have the final-
Yes, so, Town Council worked with the attorney for Country Club Acres, made some revisions to that declaration, and, uh, both sides agree that it's acceptable.
Okay.
So I think all the town concerns have been addressed by Town Council.
Alright, is, is there, um, is, is it possible that we can get, I mean, like, people are asking me questions, and I'm like, you know, I didn't read that, there was, what, seventy-six pages to that?
Yeah.
I didn't read the entire thing, so I don't know what all the, all the documents say, but people are asking me, like, you know, do you have to take care of your own graphs, and, and I'm assuming that's all laid out into this, into this, uh-
Well, I think it's after seventy-five percent of that property's bought, then it gets turned over to the-
Uh, homeowners associat-
Yeah.
Homeowners associations?
Until that comes out, then the contract that takes care of everything, right?
Yeah, it's very detailed in terms of who has maintenance responsibility for all the common areas, so, um-
So is it possible that we could get like the developer's, um, attorney to come in and just give us the highlights or the overview on that, or?
I think that, that not to do with us, that's-
Yeah, I sort of agree with Tom, it's really not public-
It's not ma, it doesn't matter?
Public policy now, it's all, it's a private development, and-
Yeah.
How they wanna manage it is up to them.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just remind you, I think you, you brought up the question about, wasn't there supposed to be some sort of a walkway or public, um-
Yeah, it says it in there.
Yeah, that still has to, right, that's part of the decision.
The walking trail?
Right.
And, um, okay.
So any sign of that being constructed yet?
I don't know.
I think it's, it's open to the public too.
Right, 'cause there was supposed to be a three, three parking spot, uh, parking lot made on Dudley Hill Road for the people to stop and park and-
Okay.
Take the walk, and I think one of those, one of those three, either one of the three or, or three regular parking spots and one handicap. I don't know if it's four, four parking spot, parking lot, or a three, three parking lot. But there was one handicap spot and two other, at least two or three other spots.
Okay, I don't wanna get to the eleventh hour and then find out that they didn't do it and nobody caught it.
And, 'cause I mean, that was part, that was how they got an extra unit, by building that walking trail.
Yes, it was a bonus for that, I believe.
Yeah, so we, we need to just make sure that that's getting addressed. Because, yeah, like this-
Well, that would come back for Graves Engineering, right, on their inspections, make sure that's in there.
Well, I would hate to see that they sold all the buildings and it didn't get built, you know, 'cause then you're gonna have a hard time getting it built after the fact. And I hope that everybody that bought a house knows that, that there's a walking trail in their backyard.
Right.
So-
Ken, and we have vote from the board on the condominium documents?
Um, based on the Town Council's opinion?
Yes.
Yeah, would somebody like to make a motion that we accept the condominium documents based, based on the Town Council's opinion? And the, and the rewriting that was done with Town Council and the developer's attorney?
So moved.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's take care of that. Nothing on, on the solar field or the J D and D construction on Oxford Ave?
Not yet, I've asked Graves to go out and do inspections for all those developments, and haven't got any reports back yet.
Haven't been by on Oxford Ave in a while, is anybody else happen to be by there?
Actually, I have a question about that one, isn't that supposed to have a seven-foot fence around it? Remember the, uh, when they had the dump, they had, they said that they had to do a seven-foot fence for state, state regulations?
I'd have to look at the plan.
That those aren't like a six-foot fence.
Usually there's fences around them for security purposes.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's a, a seven-foot fence.
Were you talking about the solar?
Yeah, the one right up, right by, um, Pro Automotive there?
Yeah.
On the way to IPG.
Yeah.
Uh, which one is this now?
On the way to IPG, on Oxford, Oxford Ave.
Okay.
So it's one up in the back on the hill.
Is that just for security, or?
I don't know, I just remember that being part of the thing.
Well, I think our bylaws, I think our bylaw said you have to have a six-foot fence, and they, I think they came back and said we have to do a seven, because that's what the, that's what, that's what the state requires.
Yes, you, you think it's smaller?
It doesn't look like seven feet, uh, it looks like if anything, I would say five foot, doesn't even look like a six-foot fence.
Okay.
Could be wrong. Maybe it's a-
I'll point that out to Graves, make sure they verify that.
Okay.
I was actually talking about twenty-four Oxford Ave, I was just curious if anything-
Oh, the, the construction garage there?
Yeah, if anything was going on there.
He, he, um, Bill was saying he was gonna send, um, Jeff Walsh out to check both of them.
Okay.
See what they're-
I seen drainage pipe there.
Yeah, I mean, the building's up, it's, it's, it looks like it's pretty much done, but I don't know-
Yeah, I thought I had, that's what I was thinking, it was a while ago, that it seemed like it was well moved along, so-
I don't think they're gonna pave the parking lot in the spring or what their plans are, but I mean, it's, you know, it looks like-
Which one is this now?
Well, he filed a-
This is the twenty-four Oxford Ave, J D and D, yeah.
Remember, he, we extended his approval-
For one year?
And he indicated he was very close to finishing it, so-
Okay, but, yeah, and either way, he's gonna run out of approval next year.
Yes.
So, okay. Alright, that brings us up to planner's plate, anything from the planner?
No.
Nothing? Comments from the planning board?
Just like to say, uh, hope Mr. Clark has a speedy recovery and is, uh-
Yep, we miss him?
On demand.
Maybe this'll give him some extra time to write some newspaper commentary. Okay, um, I don't think we'll get any comments from the audience. Other business, next meeting is, as we said earlier, November ninth, and that will be the, uh, another continuation for the Nichols College Townhouse Project, our site plan review. And we have a note here to consider weather meeting on November twenty-third before Thanksgiving.
No.
Typically, we don't meet on that, on that Wednesday, but-
Yeah, I'd say no.
What's the, what's the board's pleasure?
Wanna wait until the meeting of the ninth and bring the question up again, just in case something comes in that-
Yeah.
I don't-
We can still take the day, we can still take that day off if we want to, I mean, it's the day before, you know, pretty close to Thanksgiving.
I wish that we, uh, take it off.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we don't have anything, but if something comes up.
Well, I mean, even if, even if there's another continuation to the Nichols College, it'll just go, it'll just go to December, so-
Alright, I'll second that you're making a motion, right?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, then we're gonna cancel the November twenty-third meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
While we're on the topic of meetings, I prepared a schedule for next year, it's in Tab D. I'll post this, you know, on the website, so people will know when the planning board is meeting, in case they want to submit anything. So these indicate, these dates indicate the second and fourth Wednesdays, with additional meetings in May before the Springtown meeting, and, uh, before the Falltown meeting.
Yep.
And then, uh, eliminating the second meetings in July and August, and, and November and December.
Yep.
As, but subject to change, depending on what, what the board's pleasure is.
No, I, I looked at this, and I thought it was a pretty, it, it, I mean, it's pretty much boilerplate from last year, so I think, sorry.
Seems to be typical.
Yeah, do we need a vote on this?
No.
Okay, you're just gonna go ahead and post it? Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, I just wanna make one more comment I forgot to mention. Again, you should hear it here first, I decided today to put my hat in the ring for, uh, associate member of the zoning board.
Okay.
I just, uh, decided that, uh, I didn't wanna become a full-fledged member, 'cause I didn't wanna spread myself too thin between two boards. But, um, the past couple of ZBA meetings, they had trouble with quorum.
Yeah, I seen that, no.
So, yeah, so I figured, you know, if I'm, if I'm available and they wanna give me a call, I'll serve.
As an associate member on the ZBA, you can vote on anything?
Uh, yeah, that's a different, uh, yeah, the rules are different.
Okay, alright, so-
So you can come in cold and ruin somebody's day.
Thank you for, uh, thank you for doing that, Mr.-
My chickens.
Whatrowe? Okay, uh, no other town notices, no other correspondence, you have no vouchers, Bill?
No.
Okay, and I would say a motion to adjourn is in order. Somebody wanna make the motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you, everybody, good night.